Kenny Bunk was the one that got the money. So that's where Karen moved to. She was in charge of the social services and now she's Deputy Director of Community Development.
We all set? Meeting. Okay, do we have any adjustments to the prepared agenda?
Yes, I have one one adjustment under business. I want to talk about the memo that I left on your your table this evening. The Kenny Connector, the transportation program for seniors and adults in Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunkport in Arundel.
Okay. Any else, anybody?
I did attend the school board meeting, but left my minutes home.
Oh, okay. You can't go on your memory alone, huh?
Yeah, too much.
Okay.
Nothing of significance.
Okay.
Second.
On favor? Public forum? It appears so. Approval of minutes from February 28th. Twenty twenty two. What's ever? You have no committee and board reports? Manager reports?
Yeah, just just to keep you folks into the the circle here, the RFPs for asbestos abatement for the Old Town Hall went out on late last week. They're due back on April 18th. I sent them to five state-approved vendors, provided them the ability to contact me to share with them the survey report that we had on asbestos. And if they need to, they can obviously come down and take a look at the building and hopefully we'll get enough information back that we that we can open on the 18th and make a decision relative to some company to assist us in in doing that work. Also, at the same time, I put out the bids for surplus office equipment that's remaining in the building and I two things, obviously, from our discussion at your last meeting, it's clear that we could not donate anything to the Historical Society until we go through a process. And the process also included, though I'd like to have minimized it, the process does include going out to bid, we going through that process, determining what can be sold, what isn't going to be sold. And at the end, we could then, at that point, donate what may may remain to the Historical Society. So it's just another step, but a step that's not that difficult to accomplish. Again, those bids will be back on the 18th. I sent those to to three surplus equipment vendors as well as posted it for the general public. Took photographs of each room. So if the if people want to look at one room or they want to go over, I'm not I'm not objectionable to going over and helping folks look through the building and determine what they want to bid on. So hopefully, we can wrap both of those up at your meeting on the 18th and we can move forward with that. The next thing is I really wanted to have a little bit of a discussion on the American Rescue Plan funds. I will definitely bring it up at your meeting on your budget meeting on Wednesday to discuss with the board and the select board. But I thought I would at least pass it by you. I've I've read the the final review, final information from the Department of Treasury. I've seen their bullet points and the way it's set up now, we can we can utilize the entire funding for government services. Government Services has a plethora of things that they can use it for. Parts of them are for equipment purchases. You can use it for building maintenance and repair. And those two things really resonated with me. Being seeing that we have two large projects that I'd like to see accomplished at the fire station. One being the redoing of the roof. Selectman Neto has expressed concerns that we should at least get that done before we start having a leak, and I concur with that. As well as redoing the the equipment ramp or the apparatus ramp in front of the building. It's all cracked, so the parking area and the ramp need to be repaired. Roger is getting a quote for me to to put in there. We're anticipating that's probably going to be probably $20,000 to do that, probably. Jason hasn't given me the number, but he ballparked me at, what, 25?
Yeah, I gave a material list during when we spoke.
Okay.
He said he emailed it to me today, but I haven't seen it yet, so.
Okay.
I'm sure that'll have to go up a bit, obviously.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, if it helps, I'll just I'll give you the materials, the cost during Lumber, so I don't know if we can just bid.
Yeah, okay.
If it has to be a fact.
Right.
Yeah, whatever we have to do, but at least I'd like to get those numbers. The other thing that I was thinking, and we discussed at your budget meeting the other night, was I would like to use $70,000 within that fund to do the frame repair on the Mack truck. So what that will do is that will that will eliminate the concerns that were expressed, that we're going to drain the capital improvement plan totally down. Be able to repair that truck, give us some some flexibility when we move forward to rebody the next truck. And get those projects done at the at the fire station, which I think are important to do. Now, those are the ones that I just came up with now. We have a little over $424,000 within this budget that we have to spend within a two-year, I think it's a two-year period or earmark it within the two years. So as we progress through the process, I'm of the opinion that we should stay focused on those costs on capital or repair items as opposed to using them for personnel cost. And the reason I say that is that with the personnel cost, you're you're eventually going to get that fee in its entirety to the taxpayer. And I think that if we use that money in that respect, we're sort of minimizing what the whole impact would be as we move forward through that process. If we decide to put fire, you know, new fire personnel on, I think we need to be upfront with the folks of what that purpose is and what the money is and what it's going to cost us. And I think that that we can use the American Rescue Plan Fund for those capital projects that we can maybe get ahead of the game a little bit and get that money spent. So those are my thoughts relative to that. I think we've got plenty of time to make some decisions as to the future use of that money. But I think that, you know, we can earmark some of it now for some of the projects that we'd like to get accomplished.
Thoughts? I know Dan wants to talk.
Sure.
I, you know, I'm on board. I just I want to use as much as we can to minimize our tax impact this year. Right? I mean, that's to me, that was the goal of use. I understand what you want to do, use them for, and that's great. I think that's awesome. But there's like 400,000 that we can use, right? Some 400 and some odd thousand dollars.
Right.
Figure out a way that we can minimize our tax burden this year because we're going to get hit pretty hard. We're talking the personnel raises, the fire department, the transfer station staff, the, you know, I I think we're going to get hit pretty hard, and I want to minimize a tax burden as much as possible as sure.
When's the final day we have to use those?
It's it has to be earmarked by 20 2024. Jay, I think it's fiscal year of 2024 that has to be done.
So we could use some this year and some next year.
You can use it for road building, maintenance and other infrastructure.
And maybe putting some of those funds into the road building so that we don't have to take the tax tax debt. And if we can bump it up a little bit to help Roger even some more rolls, whatever, but, you know, try to minimize those budgets. The only reason I was going after the the wage one was because that was the easiest pick, you know, but as long as we can minimize the tax burden, I'm all for it. Okay.
What about your bonus suggestion?
Yeah, so I mean, that was the other thing too, right? So we talked about, you know, giving if those funds are available, giving extra bonuses, right? We have folks, you know, that deserve bonuses and you can use those to give those folks bonuses, you know, maybe we maybe we do everybody. I don't know. That's something for discussion.
That was in combination with your suggestion that we not do.
Right.
Essentially a 6%.
Right. My thought my thought initially was let's let's do the the 3% or 4% and then make up the difference with a with a pretty good bonus. Right? A pretty good bonus that all in all gives them, you know, 7% or 8% or whatever, you know. You know, there's there's a lot of flexibility there and I we ought to use them to the best that we can. Because if we don't use the money, somebody will. I mean, it's just there. It's not any effect on on any payments down the road or whatever, so let's grab it. Let's use everything that we can.
Yep. I am not objectionable to that. And the only reason now that you bring up the the bonus thing, that may be a a way to segue into using some of those funds. If if the board and the budget board decide that they don't want to give a full amount of of percentage increase, you could do a certain amount and then make it up with that.
Right.
And that would, you know, take up a pretty good chunk. Probably, you're probably looking 40,000 or 50,000 there, depending on what you do for a wage adjustment.
Well, it was going from going from what you had proposed to just rough numbers that I threw in there. That was, I don't know, it was like
32, 32 something.
Yeah, 32,000. And that was, you know, 4% for some, 3% for everybody else. And, you know, I thought that our, you know, responders, you know, the the fight apartment and stuff. The reason those numbers are different is because I thought I figured that, you know, our first responders should, you know, they've they've been through a whole lot, right? And I also had more for you because I think you've done a lot more with with this building, with everything else that's going on, and I felt that, you know, you deserve a, you know, a good bump. So that's kind of why I threw those numbers in there like that, so.
Yeah, that one idea is that you'll see it on Wednesday night. I put together a memo on what the impact would be totally on 3%, 4%, 5%. And then what the 5.9% was. So you'll have the bottom dollar amount. So that will give you the flexibility to have the discussion as to what that dollar amount will be. I think that I think the 4% was like $85,000 total. So if you, you know, take a portion of that and use it for for bonus and the other part for an adjustment, then you may be in a pretty good position.
But we could still we could still do the original numbers that you that you put. Go after using some of this money to take away from our cap, not to take away, but the taxpayer is in burden with the capitals.
Yep.
And then even we decide still do bonuses.
Right.
Right? I mean, I look at this as a win-win if we can use this, right?
I, yeah, I I do too, and I think those are the discussions that we really need to have, but you know, as long as I'm not getting strong objections from the at least the principal thoughts that I'm having of using this, I think that we can sort of drill down as to what we actually want to use it for and and then put together a plan. Because I think the other thing that we need to do is, for me personally, the sooner you folks and the budget board make a determination of where the salaries are going to be, I can then tighten up those budgets so we can then begin to look at them in earnest to see what kind of money we're really looking at. That will be helpful for me. So hopefully, Wednesday night, we can sort of get some of that accomplished in theory, and we'll see where that takes us. Okay. But just so you know, right now, right now, we do have 232,023.94. The federal government has already sent us. And then after a six-month period, as I understand, they'll send us the remaining balance. So and then I need to do some reporting by the end of April. So seeing that we haven't used any, the the reporting will be light. And if you folks and we all decide how we're going to use it, then I'll approach the the Department of Treasury, but more for us, it's through MMA, and they can tell them how we want to use it to make sure we're using it properly. And then the other thing that we'd have to do is to, I don't know how we will put together the warrant articles to use it. Whether we can do it as one lump sum and then categorize where we're going to use it, or whether each one of those has to be done as a separate warrant article for approval. So those are the other things that are still pending for me. I'll have any answers for you.
So, I mean, I think we need those answers like relatively quick, right? Because if if they come back and say, well, you can't use it for those funds, and we've already developed a budget, now we're scrambling.
Right.
Right? So.
Yeah, I think the Department of Treasury's guidance here gives us the flexibility I've already expressed to you. I think it's there. My issue is how we frame it in the warrant article to get that ultimate approval from the taxpayer to use it. I think it'll be, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory that this money's there and it's not going to impact them on the tax dollar. I think that would be very beneficial to them. And get some of these projects that that, you know, I worry about getting accomplished, particularly that roof. That would be the last thing after all the work we did on the inside to have the roof start to leak and then now we've got bigger issues than we had before. So that's important.
Can that these funds be used for the demolition of the town hall?
I don't know if it can or can't. I I didn't see that as I read this final final rule from the Department of Department of Treasury. Says, construction of schools and hospitals. General administration, general government administration, staff and administrative administrative facilities. It does say, however, environmental remediation remediation.
And at least the asbestos might be.
I think the asbestos could be covered under that.
Yeah.
So we could use it there.
Yeah.
All of that reduces our tax, right?
Yeah, right. It reduces, you know, the money's been approved, but then we wouldn't have to take it from fund balance. We could take it out of this save ourselves and we'll be there to use elsewhere. So I think we got a little bit of a plan moving forward.
Yeah.
The other thing I had was was approached by one of our one of our residents who is planning or coordinating a during April, Friday, April 22nd, Earth Day, a cleaning of the Eastern Trail. Excuse me. I had Henry Igrson that came in today, and evidently this thing has morphed into a larger cleanup than than initially was was brought forward to me by Ethan Davis. Ethan, I, from what I was gathering, was going to do a smaller version of cleanup of Earth Day, which he did last year, which there was a cleanup done. The bags were provided by us. We did the pickup of the trash at the end of the end of the event, so and then took care of it, so. But I guess the Run of Conservation Trust, the Conservation Trust of both communities are now going to do a full-fledged cleanup. So as I expressed to Henry, whatever we have to do here in Arundel to assist with that, we'll certainly make bags available, trucks available to haul stuff away. So that's set for Friday, August 22nd.
April.
April 22nd.
These August, God. Push it, push it.
What do we have for the, I know they say no wheeled vehicles on the Eastern Trail, but what do we have that can get down there to haul those bags and things? Or we don't have a four-wheeler or any type of a
We drive our trucks right down there.
Oh, you can?
Yeah. Yeah, we, the the gates that prohibit vehicle traffic.
Yeah.
We can move the gates and then drive our vehicles in there. We've we've had dump trucks in there, excavators, pickup trucks, one-ton trucks to haul material in. And so, yeah, we can get in there and get that stuff picked up.
You have a payroll payable warrant?
Motion we approve payable warrant?
Second. On that payable warrant is a set of must be a jacket and pants for the fire department and one of their outfits, $3,900 outfit.
Oh, okay.
American Rescue Plan. 400,000.
You just you just love that piggy bank, don't you?
You know.
But that's an idea.
They got some money out of us.
If we have
We don't take it, somebody else will.
Fire department equipment that's outdated, that's got to be like their, whatever these suits are that they just ordered. Then that may be something else that we can use those funds for.
Have to look at it a little bit harder.
You'll bleed that right to zero.
Yeah.
Well, of course we will. Why wouldn't we?
Yeah.
We wouldn't be doing the taxpayer's justice if we didn't.
It just amazed me because when I looked at where you sign, I went into the the actual bills to see what the bill was for.
Okay, and last item under business is this memo we have from the Deputy Director of Community Development regarding the connector.
Yeah, so I last week I had a meeting with with the town managers from both all respective towns, as well as the Community Development Director and the Deputy Community Development Director. They've been, they received a grant to do this, what they call, what they're calling a connector, but it's a a transportation program for seniors and adults. It it's based on a a program that was set up by a woman in Portland, Maine, that has gone nationwide. It's called ITN America, dignified transportation for seniors. And in a nutshell, what happens is a software program that's been developed. And what occurs is that folks can sign up to be providers of transportation. They can either get paid for it or they can bank credits for their own use in the future. And then people can sign up for this transportation. There's a fee involved for them to sign up. And then they, if they need a ride, they make contact with this connector. Say, I'm so-and-so, I need a ride to my doctor's appointment on Friday, the 13th, and then they'll set it up while they're on the phone. Yes, we can accommodate you. The driver will be there at such and such a time, and then they take them. So it's based around a a system where folks can get involved and assist in providing transportation and get a credit for it. Folks can just strictly sign up and get and and utilize it based on a fee that's established for them to pay. It's not a, it's not a social service program per se, other than it's providing a service to seniors who can't can't transport themselves. Right now, the program is paid for for this coming fiscal year because the grant covers not only the software that's purchased, but whatever staff time that's being utilized right now through Department of Community Development over in Kenny Bunk. They are looking for a nonprofit organization to sort of coordinate and take over this whole establishment and that it would then be run through them whatever way they organize it. But the reason we got approached is that they determined through their their grant and their soft opening of this, so so to speak, is that there were a lot of people that were, the the borders between Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunkport for transportation really don't exist. And so they were getting calls from people from Arundel, calls from people from Kenny Bunkport to partake in this sample. And they've determined that, you know, they need us to be involved in that to a certain aspect as they move through this process. So at this point, there's no funding from the town being asked for. What they're looking for is support from an municipal officials here in Arundel to endorse this as they move forward and to provide it to our Arundel residents.
This is like a lift for seniors?
Yeah.
Yeah. What was the other one, Lyft?
Uber.
Uber, yeah, Uber.
Yeah, but this is, I guess, a little bit more detailed based around their needs.
That was Wendy working with this too?
No, I I mentioned it to Wendy. She's she knows a bit. It will keep her in the loop. She'll probably be our local contact as we move through it, but.
Because so many seniors, I mean, you talked about having to go on their computer and sign up. A lot of them might have a computer, but they may not know how to get in there. They may need help signing up. So that might be something we are, Wendy can help, could help with that.
They talk about like making an app for the phones on this, you know?
What do you mean app for the phone? Oh, I think there's one exists. There was a plethora of things within the software program that that folks can utilize. And I think I asked them to provide me a memo so I could approach it to you folks tonight, at least to give you a flavor of it. If you need more details, we certainly can get more details, but my take at the meeting was that it was something that we'd be able to provide an additional service to the residents of Arundel that's actually a coordinated service that really isn't a financial burden to the taxpayer, other than if you take part in the service. So you have to sign up for it, you have to pay for it, or you sign up. You may use it, or you may not use it for five years and book the time, you know, they know that, you know, Keith Trifethan has a pickup truck and he's willing to take people to the dump or to the to the dentist or whatever, and then they, I'm going to book my time. So when I need it, I can just call up and say, yeah, you've got so many bank credits. Of course, we'll take you to the doctor's appointment. So that's essentially what this is all about.
Are you looking for a motion for this?
I I don't think so. I I just.
One, they want us to participate, but and they say they've got funding now, but I mean, it sounds to me, they they're going to be funding some coming from us if we're going to continue on beyond this year.
Well, the 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 essence that I got at the meeting is that they're looking for corporate sponsorship. They're looking for other ways to fund it. That's what, that's how it was sold to us. So I'm going to hold them to their word.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to do other than, other than that, unless you you feel you need more detail, I can provide more detail to this program. I think I think it may be a good a good benefit to our residents.
Steering committee dedicated to exploring funding and other opportunities to sustain this program.
Now, I'm, I'm still thinking we're going to come back here at some point. All, all three communities at some point are going to have only have some money, I'm sure, you know? It may not be a lot, but particularly if they're going to get established a nonprofit outside of the municipal community, that they're going to have to start paying people, um, you know?
So just the, I have a quick question here. It says, though it will be available for any adult over the age of 18.
Right. People that are mentally impaired, but it kind of doesn't say, it kind of doesn't say that, right? It just says
auction, uh, for older people, adults with visual impairments and other disabilities, though it will be available for any adult over the age of 18.
Correct.
I mean, to me, they've got other avenues. This would be a great thing for, for the seniors, you know, just the folks that are impaired or what have you. See how it goes. I mean, they've got Uber, they've got, I don't know if those are even still, still working. I know my son was doing Lyft for a while.
Well, let me drill down and get some more general information. We'll see where it takes us at that point.
Is there any other business?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, Keith. Um, is the planning board, uh, planning on continuing to hold their meetings via Zoom?
Well, you know, it's interesting. You, you bring that up because I was thinking about that today.
Hmm.
That was one of the questions that I will ask the, uh, chair to see where they're, they are going. Um, it's my opinion that they should be back in this room conducting their business like everybody else should be. That's my opinion.
And then the other thing that I have, is there any way we can look at putting mufflers on those things up there? When that AC kick, AC, whatever heat kicks in.
The, the air changers kick in.
Also.
You can't restrict that airflow. I haven't heard of it.
But maybe they can put something to somehow quiet it down. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it, because the fence are, you know, the grating is small or what have you, but just when that kicks in, it's pretty darn hard to hear.
Yeah.
I struggle too, especially when we're sitting there.
Yeah, it's worse out there.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll reach out and see if there's anything that we can do to sort of minimize the noise.
We're getting older.
Sure.
Yes.
Any else there?
Nope.
Okay.
Now it's Jason's turn.
We have a budget meeting Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes. No, it's this, this is 16th. Remember we switched it so we wouldn't do St. Patrick's Day.
What's, what's, uh, Wednesday?
Wednesday, we have rec department. Um, um, we have, I want to go over the capital budgets. I'd like to start thinking about the anticipated revenue as well. Um, and then we sort of got to circle back and look at the whole budget as a whole. Once I get a determination from you folks in reference to salaries, I can sort of firm that up and then we can circle back and look at. So I'd like determination on the, on the salaries if I can. Rob, Dan, Wednesday?
I will be now, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Too warm to head up the lawn. Hey, I wonder if Jen can use those American Rescue funds for her playground. People like getting out playing more, you know?
I don't know.
Jason, your turn. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Saber. They're done.
Wow. 7:34.